Okay. In accordance with the open public meetings, Act 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the planning board, the township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. La Court.
Here.
Ms. McGyver.
Here.
Mr. Metler.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Howe.
Here.
Mr. Thomas asked to be excused. He had a family emergency in Pittsburgh that he had to take care of. Mr. Petosnak, he's also asked to be excused. He's away this evening. Ms. Onyaka?
Yes, sir.
And Chairman Orsini?
Here.
Make a motion to accept the absences.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, let's start with the minutes from the regular meeting from June 18th. Are there any comments or corrections?
If there's no discussion, I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Ms. McGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Metler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Petosnak? I'm sorry, he's not here. And Mr. Onyaka?
Yes, sir.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Okay, so, let's see. Resolutions, we have Jack's Gennaro LLC, PLN 14-00014.
I can't do it.
Yeah. The chairman and Seal can't vote. Everyone else who's here can vote on that.
So, if somebody would like to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. La Court?
Yes.
Mr. Metler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Onyaka?
Yes.
Okay. For discussion, you have the voucher, the planning board, July retainer, and the amount of $833. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the retainer.
Second.
We're going to call it.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. La Court?
Yes.
Ms. McGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Metler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Onyaka?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Mike, we added that if you want to do that at the end of the meeting, it's fine. We just, we added it, we got it a little bit late, so we just put it on the Jack's Gennaro. So, if you want to, sometime during the meeting, if you want to take a look at it.
We just did it.
Oh, you just did that? Oh, I thought you were doing the vouchers.
Well, we did, and right before that, we did Jack's Gennaro.
Ah, you're killing.
I go so fast, it's like light speed. Okay. First hearing.
Must be deaf.
County of Somerset, PLN 14-00008.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, and members of the public. My name is Francis P. Linis. I have offices at 21 Clyde Road here in Somerset, New Jersey. I'm pleased to represent Somerset County today in an application to subdivide a seven-acre lot into two lots. Purpose of the subdivision is to preserve the rear five acres of the site. We have a remainder lot, which would be two acres in size, and would contain an existing home. Basically, the county would like to close on the property and purchase these five acres. That would be used for passive open space purposes and part of the county's 95-acre South Franklin Initiative, an area targeted to preserve the environmental and scenic integrity of the Millstone River Valley. The proposal is to leave the property in its natural state and, in the future, develop a trail network connecting other county open spaces properties are acquired. There is one variance that we're requesting with the subdivision, and it's a technical major subdivision. The reason it's not a, you know, two lots. The reason it's not a minor subdivision is because the ordinance says if you previously subdivided a piece of property within the last 10 years, technically, the next subdivision is a major subdivision, so that's why it has been classified as a major subdivision. This seven-acre lot is located along the north side of Old Georgetown Road, just west of its intersection with Stephen Drive, and it's within your RR5 zone. We, in connection with the variance, there's a lot area variance for the two-acre remainder lot, which has a house now, and when all this is over, we'll still have a house, and there's no new construction proposed whatsoever or no new development proposed whatsoever with respect to this application. We've reviewed the staff reports. The most important report on this particular type of application was issued by Mark Healy, your township planner. He offered some opinions on the variance. We agree with his opinion. This is a classic C2 variance case for the lot area. It serves a number of purposes. 55D-2F for the appropriate and efficient expenditure of public funds to coordinate public development with land use policies, and this application does that. 55D-2G, it provides sufficient space for public open space, and 55D-2J promotes the conservation of open space. When you look at the negative criteria, again, we're in agreement with Mr. Healy, your planner. We don't see any detriments whatsoever, since the residential home on the remainder lot is existing, and this proposal does not propose any development whatsoever. Also, the remainder lot is similar in size and dimensions to those existing adjoining Stephen Drive. So, when you add up the balancing under the C2 analysis, it appears that the benefits sufficiently outweigh any detriments, since there are no detriments. The only other report of any note is Scott Thomas's report, and we can comply with Scott Thomas's report. I do have a witness, if you want to ask him questions. I have Tom Bocino. He's the principal planner of land acquisition for Somerset County. But before we do that, and if you want it, we're just going to show you what the subdivision's all about. We've marked as Exhibit A1, basically, a rendered copy of the subdivision. This is the existing home. This will be the two acres. This is the seven-acre parcel. What we have in green is the property that will be transferred to the county should this board grant the subdivision. Adjacent to this particular lot is another lot owned by the county, six acres, that'll ultimately, after the closing, be merged with that lot, and then there's further open space with the county heading out in that direction. Exhibit A2 is a little more graphic. I've marked it A2. This is what it really will look like in the event the board does approve the subdivision. Here's the existing lot. This is where the house is and will remain. This is the portion we're seeking a subdivision of, and ultimately, this will be part of the county open space, stretching from Canal Road and back down to Old Georgetown Road. So, unless the board has any questions of Mr. Bocino, we're pretty much resting.
I have one question.
For him or for Pete Francis?
Well, you don't have to be in the news here. I guess the question, anyway. One, one in.
On the drawing which is showing the house and the subdivided lot, in the upper left-hand corner, you have a notation that says existing septic area. Do you see that?
Yeah, it's on the front, yes.
All right. Wherever that septic field is, it has to be 10 feet off the property line. That doesn't tell me, because actually, if I drew a 10-foot mark there, part of that area is within 10 feet. You either have to move the property, well, I'm sure you would wiggle the property line to get around it. You can't be closer than 10 feet to the next property, even though it's the county. That's where it has to be by law. So, if you're subdividing, you're drawing a line across the existing property. I don't know if you remember this happening in East Millstone. They did a subdivision, found out the subdivision was some, you had a lot. So, I don't want that to happen here, if they have problems, if the county doesn't want to get involved in your septic problems.
It's a good point, Mr. Pettit. I can only defer to Tom Bocino, a representative of the county, to answer that particular question. Bocino, you want to be sworn in, please?
Yes.
All right, Tom, you're in charge of the acquisition of this particular piece of property. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. You heard what Mr. Pettit had to say. What are your views with respect to the location of the existing septic area, in light of the fact that there apparently is a requirement that it be separated by at least 10 feet from the property line?
We could go back and talk to our consultant and have him confirm the distance from the property line. If it is closer than 10 feet, we will move the property line.
Okay. Can we make that condition of approval, if there isn't approval?
Yes. In the event it is less than 10 feet, you have the county's representation that it will be moved to accommodate the 10 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim Sharp, either. It's not so much the fact that, you know, it's an environmental concern, because the other property isn't going to be developed, but like you said, if they had septic problems, then the county could potentially get involved with the 10-foot lottery.
It could be. You never know. It's easy to make it legal, but just moving the line a little bit.
Yep. Makes sense. Does anybody else have any questions? If not, we need to open the meeting to the public.
Make a motion to open it to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is open to the public on this matter?
Seeing that no one has come forward, I make a motion to close it to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, if there's no further board discussion, we'll just entertain a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. La Court?
Yes.
Ms. McGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Metler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Onyaka?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Okay, so, the next hearing is Somerset Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company, number one, PLN 14-00007.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Landford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for a site plan approval, which is a phased project. The first and most imminent phase is the construction of a pole barn adjacent and behind the existing firehouse on the subject property, which is located at 20 Hollywood Avenue. The second phase of the project is the redoing of the rear portion of the property, which is now a gravel undefined area, which is used for some occasional overflow parking into a formalized parking lot. I have two witnesses that I intend to call, Mr. Maria from the fire company and Mr. Ford, our engineer. So...
All right, gentlemen, can you state your name for the record, please?
Anthony Pancherry, Chief, Somerset Fire Department.
Charles Maria, trustee, Somerset Fire and Rescue.
I'm going to direct my questions mostly to Mr. Maria. Mr. Pancherry will be here if there are questions that he needs to answer. Mr. Maria, you're one of the trustees of the fire company, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And as I indicated in my opening, the purpose of this application is a phased application. The first part of the application is to construct a pole barn, is that correct?
That's correct.
And why are you constructing a pole barn?
We will be short, in receipt shortly, of a new fire truck, which is going to be a little too large for the current building, so we are moving some of our equipment out of the current building into the new pole barn.
Okay. What kind of equipment will be stored in the pole barn?
Mostly trailers. We have a couple of enclosed trailers that have specific equipment on it, and two boat trailers, and then the tow vehicle, which is a 15-passenger van.
Okay. Now, the pole barn that you intend to construct, you have provided to me, and I'll mark it as A1, the exterior of a brochure from the company that will be providing the pole barn, is that correct? Pioneer Pole Buildings, Inc.?
That is correct.
Okay. And I'll mark it on the inside. And on the rear of the folder are numerous pole barns, and one most similar to the one you intend to construct is the one in the upper right-hand corner.
That's correct.
And not only does that show the type of the pole barn that you intend to construct, you also have here the material samples. The light tan is basically the...
The exterior wall color.
Exterior wall cover. The brownish is...
Trim.
Trim, and then the...
Dark brown will be the roof.
Okay. And I'll pass the picture of the building to the board members, so they can review it.
And that's aluminum siding?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Maria, will the building contain heat, electricity, and water?
It will. We are required to maintain 55 degrees by our agreement with the fire district, who own the apparatus, to house the apparatus in a controlled environment.
And how are you getting those utilities to the building?
They will be brought in from the existing building, which is only 10 feet from, which will be 10 feet from the existing building.
Okay. And will there be any stacks or exhaust coming out of the building?
Just for the two ceiling-mounted heaters, but I believe they're going to be going out the sidewalls. They're going to be spaced evenly enough apart, so our building manufacturer didn't want to put anything through the roof, so it's better for me leakage standpoint to go out through the sidewalls.
So, the roof will be the roof, and there'll be nothing protruding from the roof. The second part of the application involves the rear portion of the building, of the property. At the present time, as I indicated in my opening, there's some gravel to the rear of the property, is that correct?
That's correct.
And how often do you use that area to the rear of the property?
Less than a dozen times a year.
Okay. And what are the reasons that you have to use that rear portion of the property? What goes on there that requires overflow parking?
The largest event is our open house, our Public Safety Day in October, where there's no parking in the main parking lot because of the events and things for the public. So, we have things set up in the back, and occasionally, if some of the firefighters are gone for the day, they'll park their vehicle in the back, so they don't take up the front spots for emergency responders coming to calls. But other than that, just a handful of events at our facility.
Okay. And the rear portion, the main building at the present time does have a room that you rent out?
That's correct.
And is there a maximum occupancy to that room?
Yeah, the maximum occupancy for that room is 120.
Okay. And do you normally, when you rent it out, have a problem with parking, where people have to park in the rear portion?
Generally, no. Maybe once or twice, but other than that, our rentals are usually well below the occupancy.
Okay. And your projection, obviously, you have to raise the funds to do the parking lot, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what is your projection as to when that phase of the project may take place?
I'd be guessing if 10 years.
Okay. But at this time, since we're here, we want to get everything approved, so that if the time comes that you have to do it, you'll be able to go ahead and do it.
Our intention is to go forth with Phase Two, but financially, we just don't know when we're going to be able to do that.
Okay. And you read the staff reports, and there were some recommendations, like putting slats in the fence and everything, and I'll deal with them further with the engineer, but we are in general agreement with the staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Where do you want to address screening for the lighting on the...
The screening for the lighting? I can do that with Mr. Ford.
Okay. We'll wait till you... Is he next?
He's next.
Okay. Bring him on. Unless anybody else has any general questions.
I just want, how do you delineate the parking now on the gravel area, if you have an event? Just park anywhere?
Yeah, pretty much. Just try to get as straight as you can.
Hope for the best.
Yes, exactly.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Bob.
With the, I was there a month ago at an event, and there was about maybe 40 people. Parking was tight. So, my question is, with the pole barn, how many parking spaces? Now, that was just pulling in and just going against the wall, okay? How many are you going to lose by putting that pole barn up? Parking spots, let's say.
Less than 10. Because there's not, there was not much parking in the back where the building's going to go, but by making it easier to get into the upper lot, in the eventuality that we need those extra spots, it's going to be a little bit more effective parking up there, but about 10 spots.
Okay. Thank you.
I would think it's less than 10. If it's 50 feet wide, and parking space is about 10 feet wide, so it has to be five or less, I would think, for the record.
Plus, the approach, the front of the, the entire front of the building also, we're losing spots that are not necessarily blocked by the building, so they don't block the truck, the apparatus in.
So, when you have events now, people use that gravel area on occasion?
On occasion, yeah.
Okay. And how many times a year, did you say, that that gravel area gets used?
Less than 10. We have about 24 events a year, about two dozen events, give or take rentals and such, and less than 10 times.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I mean, you would have to think that by paving and striping what's there, you might have more efficient use of the space, which might mitigate, right? Because if there's no, if there's no striping and there's no, there's no actual stalls, right? You know how people park at those kind of events, right?
Generally, when you stripe, you get, yes.
It would be a little more efficient.
And, Mr. Orsini, just so you understand, it's not a question of us not wanting to do it now. We don't have the funds to do it now, and when the funds become available, that's when it'll get done. So, it's, you know, we're planning for the future. If things go well, you know, we'd rather do it sooner than later, but there just aren't no dollars in the budgets to do it in the next couple of years.
I have a technical question. If one of the variances requested are, is the parking area is required to be paved, and you're currently using it for parking, but it's not paved, does that mean you're in perpetual violation of this zoning ordinance?
It, that was, that's been a pre-existing condition. That's been there ever since the fire company was built. That stone was there. So, it's not that something that we put in in violation of any approvals or things of that nature. That stone was always there. With a new development application, obviously, you can make a condition of approval that we pave it, or you can grant the relief that we leave it gravel, till such time as we're able to pave it.
No, I just was curious as to why it became a variance, if it's the, you know, sort of de rigueur. I mean, it's not so like a lot line, right, where it's got to be 10 feet and it's nine. This is sort of like more like, more than a, you know, you know what I mean? It's not a static sort of number, it's a condition.
It's a design standard, more than, more than a variance.
That's the word I'm looking for.
Yeah, it's a design standard. I mean, obviously, in the perfect world, we'd want that lot, no lots that are being used to be paved, but in some instances, and this lot was developed and it was not paved way back when, and like I said, it has limited use, and it's functioned for the fire company well over the years, and, you know, we'd like to make it better, and we will make it better as soon as we're able to make it better.
Yeah. Well, I mean, from an impervious coverage standpoint, we'd actually rather not have it paved, truthfully.
Right.
Not that, not that, that is adding a huge amount of impervious coverage, if you're at 77.2% existing, and it's going to go up 0.7% to 77.9, it's not a huge, huge deal. But I'm actually in favor, if you could grass pavers or something like that. I mean, I don't know if that's any cheaper than asphalt.
There's probably, they're, from what I understand, they're more expensive, but...
Yeah. But I just assume it won't be.
I mean, again, we're a ways off. We can look at alternatives when we do decide to do the parking lot, and if, you know, if grass pavers make sense, you know, they may look at that, but we haven't delved into that, that area at this time.
I would think, too, Mr. Chairman, that if they were proposing something that was going to increase the number of people that they could accommodate in, you know, in the rental, or if they were, or if these changes were to propose, the frequency of those events, from what I'm hearing, it's more of a storage vehicular movement type issue, that that's why they're doing this. So, you know, if they were coming to you and saying, well, we're doing this so we can increase the capacity of our rental hall, instead of 120, we're going to have 240, and instead of renting it 20 times a year, we're going to rent it 50 times a year, while in those situations, you may say, well, if that's what you're doing, then you need to pave that parking lot. But that's not what I'm hearing.
No, not at all. We can't, the hall cannot accommodate anymore, familiar with who makes up the occupancies around here. It's pretty much, it is what it is at this point.
Any other questions? Go ahead with the...
Mr. Ford?
Michael? Michael Ford.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think I need to hear his qualifications. He's accepted.
Oh, come on!
Unless you want to just update your resume for it.
They haven't changed since the last time I was here.
Excuse me. Mr. Ford, you were retained by the applicant to prepare the site plan, which is the subject of this application, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Can you briefly describe the existing conditions on the property, starting at Hollywood and working your way back to the rear of the property? What's there now?
Fronting Hollywood Avenue, there's the, as you face the property, the existing firehouse with the large garage doors to access the equipment with a concrete pad in front of it, and then down the right-hand side or Westerly property line, there's a paved area with parking along it and access to the rear of the property. And as you go down the right-hand side of the property or the, or the Westerly side of the property, along that property line and that paved area for parking, there's a timber retaining wall, and then that timber retaining wall goes across between the paved area at the rear of the building and the gravel area beyond it, at the absolute back of the property.
Okay. Is there currently in place any fencing in and around the subject property?
Yes, there's a chain link fence around the perimeter of the property.
Okay. And at the current time, are there any slats within that chain link fence, or is it an open chain link fence?
No, it's an open chain link fence.
Okay. Is there any current lighting on the property?
Yes, there's building mounted lighting. There's also three free stand, I'm sorry, four freestanding lights in the existing paved portion of the parking area.
Okay. And how many parking spaces will remain in the existing parking area after the construction of the pole barn building?
We've identified 29 paved spaces, and the gravel area being able to accommodate about 29 spaces.
Okay. Now, can you briefly take the board through what we are proposing in Phase One?
Yes. Phase One, quite simply, is the 50-by-40 pole barn directly behind the existing building. What's there now is a storage shed, detached storage shed to be removed, and then with that Phase One, there'll be grading around the pole barn to accommodate the pole barn and improve the access to the rear gravel parking area, because as I said, there's a timber retaining wall between the paved parking area and the gravel parking area that'll have to be removed, a portion of it at least, removed to accommodate the pole barn.
Okay. Phase Two would entail what, Mr. Ford?
Phase Two is to improve that existing gravel parking area at the rear of the property, make it a more formal gravel, or a more formal parking area, paving it, but aside from the expense of paving that area, there's also a pretty significant expense with accommodating the regrading of that area. the regrading of that area. As I said, there's a timber retaining wall now between the paved portion of the parking area and the gravel portion of the parking area. That's because there's about a two, three-foot difference in grade. The, the rear of the property is much higher where the gravel parking area is than the paved portion. And when, what we envisioned with the improvement of that parking area is to eliminate that retaining wall between the two areas entirely, and then remove the, that, you know, area that's quite high at the back of the property and make it a smooth, continuous parking area and pave it.
In Phase Two, is there anything proposed regarding the lighting?
Yes. On Phase Two, and we've, we've provided a plan sheet five that shows the proposed lighting. It would be, what we show there is one, one light in the gravel area that would be paved in the center of that parking area, so it's not at the perimeter of the property. It's, in effect, to try to, the most efficient lighting of that parking area while minimizing the disturbance to the neighbors. And then we've also identified on there, that lighting plan, the potential to replace the existing parking lights in the existing paved area with more efficient fixtures, taking the three that are along the Westerly property line, making it just two light fixtures. And part of that is because also, as I understand, right now, the existing light fixtures are not privately owned light fixtures. You can actually have an agreement with PSENG to lease fixtures and you pay annual fee for that. This would provide for the fire department to eliminate that continual fee to PSENG and have their own private fixtures. And that's what's shown on Sheet Five, and it would be part of Phase Two.
And when we redo the lighting, and all of the new lighting will comply with attach up standards to avoid spillage onto adjoining property owners, that all of the lights will be appropriately screened and shielded. Is that correct?
Correct.
What's the height of them?
Their overall...
20 feet.
20 feet.
20 feet. Can they be less?
They could be less, but as you lower them, you might have to add fixtures.
Yeah. Well, I mean, here's, here's, here's what's probably going to happen. I mean, you have quite a bit of screening around the building now, but you've got a couple of residences that have none. And so, you know, I can't imagine the board would not want you to screen in some way with landscaping. That also gets expensive. So, if that's a requirement, then the question is, you know, could you lower the lights such that they're, you know, really just illuminating what you need? I, I think, you know, what you're saying about the firehouse owning them is, is good, because then they have the ability to shut them off, which would probably also be a condition of approval, right? Where you don't, you're not using them at night, shut them off, other than, you know, the building mounted lights, which you need for security or whatever. You wouldn't need this gravel parking light, so we'd probably put some sort of hours on them if you're not actually using the parking lot, so they're not on, you know, 3 o'clock in the morning, nobody's there. Of course, I don't think you'd want that anyway, because you're just going to want to pay for the electricity when you're not using it. But, you know, there's, there's a couple of ways that we could, we could work this, but I mean, that's got to be screened.
Yeah. We can look at reducing the height of the fixtures. Yeah, the, the, when I mentioned the PSENG fixtures, I think the fire company still has control over whether they're on or off. They just, it's not owned by them.
But are they on all the time? Probably not, right?
No.
Right.
Dawn to dusk, yeah. So then, then that's perfectly fine. So the only, the only security lighting that's probably on all the time is what's on your building, right? But at least if somebody comes along with ill intent, it's going to come on. So, I mean, just, just think about that, because, I mean, I, I know it's in your Phase Two, and it may be 10 years down the road, but chances are good that, you know, you're going to need some kind of screening, even though 20 feet is not exorbitantly high for parking lot fixtures, and you're only going to have the one in the center. You know, you may want to do, you may want to do some screening.
The other thing, Mr. Orsini, even though we may use that rear parking lot, it's going to probably be used very rarely, even as of now, and when the building is rented out, in talking to them, I mean, a lot of times, it's Saturdays during the day, Sundays during the day. It, there's not, it's rented out some evenings, but there's not a lot of nights when, when that building is rented out for activity, so you're not going to have their rear parking lot lit that often. It's not like something is going to be constantly...
Like a shopping center.
Like a shopping center, right?
And what type of landscape screening do you plan to put there?
There was a recommendation, if I, Mr. Healy recommended, well, there were a couple of things that he recommended. He recommended slats in the fence, which we are able to putting in, and we will sit down with, with Mr. Healy to come up with a landscape planning plan. My guess is it's probably going to be some sort of trees, evergreen-type trees, which, which will provide actual screening rather than deciduous trees.
Like Leyland cypress?
Right, and, but we'll work that out with Mr. Ford, and Mr. Healy, I'm sure can work that out.
Okay, I, that, to me, I think, at least propping out was the biggest issue, I figured. Put that aside right away.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Very briefly, Mr. Ford, before we even go to the staff reports, can you just, for the record, identify the variances? Mr. Healy sort of identified them in his report, but just quickly, so we get them on the record. And most of them are existing conditions. There's one or two situations where there is an exacerbation, but if you can just go through those, so that they're on the record.
Yes. Yeah, the, Page Two of Mr. Healy's report, and it's identified on the site plan as well, lists the variance relief. All of them are existing conditions. The front yard setback to the existing firehouse is just slightly under the 35-foot minimum required. The building coverage is exceeded today in that it's over 15% with the existing building, and then with the proposed pole barn is going to be 19.4%. The maximum lot coverage allowable is 25%, and as it was, I think, discussed earlier this evening, we're at 77.2% today, and we'll be at 77.9% with the Phase Two improvements to the rear parking area. Phase One wouldn't have no impact on the impervious coverage, because the rear parking area stays as it is. There's an existing fence around the property has been stated, that's five feet high, whereas the ordinance requirement for that screening is six feet. The parking access aisle width, that is the drive access aisle between the head-on 90-degree parking spaces, the ordinance requires 26 feet. We're at 24 feet. We're seeking relief, and that's an existing condition in the existing parking area. And then when we make that Phase Two improvement to formalize the rear gravel parking area, we're continuing that same existing condition, and it's functioned without incidents, I understand, today, so we'd like relief for that.
And given the fact that you have parking, drive aisle, and building, is there any way to make the drive aisle any wider?
Not for the existing condition, and in the rear gravel area, if we were to do that, we'd end up losing spaces.
Okay.
There's no lighting today in the rear gravel parking area. In Phase One, we'd like to keep it that way, so we're seeking relief for that. And then also, as was discussed earlier, the ordinance requires technically that all parking areas be paved. The existing gravel parking area is not paved, and we'd like to keep it that way in Phase One. In Phase Two, we would pave it, but we wouldn't put curb around it. So there's an ordinance requirement normally that the curbing surrounds a parking area. We'd like to leave it as an uncurbed parking area.
Now, you've had a chance to review the staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is there any problem with complying with all of the conditions in the staff report, or if there's something that needs to be worked out with engineering, it can be worked out with engineering?
Yes.
Okay.
Before you leave that, Peter, I assume you're, you're on the engineering report there. Number 14, that's a big thing.
Will comply.
How, are you going to put in a basin? What, what do you need?
I...
Room for that?
We would have to discuss the details of that with the engineering department staff. It could be dry wells. It could be the possibility to capture some of the roof runoff, obviously, not the, right now, we have no on-site stormwater management system. Everything drains to Hollywood Avenue toward the, toward the road.
Is it, would it, would that continue to be that way?
Yes.
Because, well, really? I mean, the reason I ask is because in the staff reports, it says graded away from the building, the gravel parking lot and the pole barn. So if that happens, then how can the water not go towards the back, towards the two residences? Which is probably why Jim, I know he's thinking this, is thinking curbs, because at least you direct the water, you contain it, you can direct it to wherever, whatever you're going to do with it.
Yeah, no, the, when you, when you think of it being drained away from the building, like the rear building, and you have residents behind you, it drains away from the building to a point, and then goes in either direction and runs around the building. Even with the regrading, the building sits much lower than the rear property line, so there's no way we're going to get...
What about the parking lot, when that's paved? Where's the, where's that, where the water going?
That would go down toward, toward Hollywood as well.
Okay, so the whole site, now, even after all this is done, is still going to drain towards Hollywood?
Correct.
All right.
Yeah.
It's not going to drain towards the residential residence?
Not in the back, no. No.
Okay.
I have no further questions.
Okay. I, I've said enough, so I'll leave it to folks on my right. Anything? Bob?
I just wondered if you'd approached the DNR Canal Commission yet?
We've made application to the DNR Canal Commission. Yes. We haven't received the staff report to date.
Okay. Anybody else to my right? To my left, any questions? Jim? Carl?
I don't quite understand. I guess the rules have changed. We, back in the day, we considered it, whether it was stone or gravel or anything else, we took it as impervious, because they always came back later and paved it, and they used that gravel stuff to avoid stormwater detention and all the rest of it. So I guess this was approved that way. I have nothing more I can say about it.
Yeah, well, from a zoning perspective, the gravel, existing gravel is counted as impervious. That's why the impervious is only going from 77.2.
That doesn't even bother me. We used to do it for stormwater analysis because...
Yeah.
Two weeks after they moved in, they paved it. They're not going to do that.
Well, that'll be between, yeah, that'll be between them and engineering as far as what type of drainage they're going to have to provide for. I don't think anything has changed in that regard.
And quite frankly, with Phase One, we're not providing anything. We've, Mr. Ford has tried to reach the engineering department and just hasn't been able to touch base. We were hoping to have a discussion on that issue, so we can provide more information what we got here this evening, but have been unable to do so. But hopefully, we will meet with them shortly, so that we're all on the same page when we make the revisions to the plans.
Well, Pete, you said you're not going to do anything for Phase One, stormwater-wise? Because the note indicates that you need to comply with minor development ordinance portion of the stormwater.
But we're just, from what I understand, is what we're putting is a pole barn on impervious. We're not creating any additional impervious.
It states, "Any development that results in creation of more than 1,000 square feet of new impervious or disturbs 2,500 square feet of land area."
And we're not doing either. The building's 50 by 40, and it's getting plopped down on the blacktop.
It says Phase One results in 9,000 square foot of disturbance. And I see that on the plant, on your soil erosion plant.
Yes, it does say that.
Your limit of disturbance is 9,000 square feet.
Right, with the regrading around the pole barn in the parking area for the gravel.
All right, so I, I will meet with Tom, and we'll make sure we provide what needs to be done to, to deal with that, to handle the regrading.
If, is the, would the board be comfortable in terms of the variances? So their existing fence is five feet tall, and that's all around the property. So the ordinance says six feet. And I would suggest that maybe the way we could get, kill two birds with one stone, is allow them to keep the five-feet-tall fence, but put slats in it, and mandate the landscaping when the Phase Two goes in. That would be what I would think. Is that amenable to the board? I mean, it doesn't make sense to have them tear down their existing fence to add one foot height to it, or whatever they might do to it.
Not if they're going to put landscaping.
Yeah, exactly. And, and that's the, that's the... Well, when Phase Two comes in, they'll have to make sure that there is.
Well, we're going to keep the fence.
All right. Yeah, they'll have enough room. There's, um...
Column room.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can't be a wide ad.
Yeah, there's enough, definitely enough. 20 feet on the side.
If it seals favorite tree, the Leyland cypress?
The Leyland cypress, right. It's fast-growing, yes.
You'll have room for that.
And just so I have the, I need some direction, I'm assuming that we're talking about the rear of the new, of the proposed parking area when Phase Two is constructed.
Yes.
And when you're looking, when you're looking at that, that exhibit there, we're talking along the rear property line?
Yeah, and the property line towards Eastern Avenue, whatever direction that is, east or west.
Those are the two property lines where the homes are closest, that one is, is very close.
All around the rest of the property, it looks pretty well screened.
Okay. I just, I just need to have that direction. Thank you.
I mean, from the aerial.
Yes, just those two sides.
So, but that wouldn't have to be initiated until Phase Two, because you don't have any new lighting coming on with the pole barn, so, other than what you've already got on the building anyway. I, I just, I have to say one thing, because it's just funny. You know, for years, Joe Danielson was on the board, a good friend of mine, and the first thing he would see in one of these variances, and I just find this ironic, is he would say, what would he say? The parking lot aisles have to be 26 feet wide to get the fire edges. I just thought, I had to point that out.
Mr. Orsini, when I saw that, and I saw Mr. House was one of the meetings, I said, "The next time you write in your report that you want a 26-foot drive, I'm going to show you those plans."
That's only, probably the only time you get a variance, because you put out your own fire, right? So, motion to open to the public.
I'll make a motion to open to the public at this time?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This application is open to the public right now? If you'll, oh, okay, we got a couple of folks, you're first and you're second. And if you can come to the dais, where, Peter, can you do me a favor, since you know, are, Mike, anyone, you can turn the microphone on? And if you'd state your name and address and be sworn in before you start your testimony.
Hi. Hi, my name is Mary Clinton. My address is 1370 Eastern Avenue. Yes, I do. I am at the back of the firehouse, and when I first bought my property, where they're going to do construction is where my water supply is, because the well that I get water from, I think is where they're going to do construction. So I'm at a point now, what happens to my water once they do their construction?
It, Ms. Clinton owns the property lot 5.01. If, if I may, what I was able to ascertain, this, this issue came up when we found out that there is a well on our property. Mrs. Clinton's house, and I don't know if she bought it from the developer, when that lot was subdivided, there was supposed to be, as a condition of that approval, that that dwelling was to tie into public water, which is available to that lot. And sooner or later, Ms. Clinton's going to have to tie into that public water. We don't, because that well is going to have to be eventually capped. There is a waterline access easement that was created as part of the subdivision to benefit her lot. We, quite frankly, it will not affect our building of the pole barn, so we can do that in Phase One, we're fine. But as we get to Phase Two, somewhere down the road, that well is going to have to be relocated, and public water has to be tied into.
Where, where is the well?
It's, it's located in the shed.
Yeah. Excuse me?
No, it's, it's fire company's property now. Was it not that when the shed was built?
It was not that. That lot was created as part of the subdivision that created Lot 5.01, 5.02, and then that rear portion was dedicated to the fire company.
And the shed is on another person's property, her well's on somebody else's property.
It was on somebody else's property. As part of that subdivision approval, that well was to have been abandoned, and there was a waterline easement. If you look at...
And who was supposed to do that? Not her.
Not her would probably have been...
The lady, excuse me, I don't mean to say her, I'm not being disrespectful.
No, that's okay. That's all right.
But it's not her problem. It shouldn't be her problem, anyway.
No, it, whoever, there was an access, I don't know who built the house, but there wasn't...
Get the house for a minute. Who did the subdivision? Do you know? You remember?
The applicant was Donald Sweeney.
The guy that lives here?
He owns that lot, I don't believe, I don't think he resides... He owns that lot, I don't believe, I don't think he resides there, but he owns that lot.
He owned it at the time. He sold me the property.
Pardon?
He made no mention of the subdivision.
No, ma'am, I don't think it's your problem, but it's somebody's problem.
Yeah.
So there is an easement? Where does the easement go out to? Hollywood or Eastern?
Eastern Avenue.
Eastern, oh, okay, yeah.
So this won't be impacted by Phase One and Phase Two?
This will not be impacted by Phase One at all. Phase Two will have an impact.
So Mr. Sweeney was supposed to have connected her house to the water? Is that what you're saying?
No, he got a subdivision.
And...
Built his own house, I guess. And her house got built and the well was on this lot where the firehouse is, I guess. I don't know. I don't know how that subdivision took place.
But the resolution of approval, I was not involved in that, but that resolution of approval indicated that the two new dwellings, which were, that dwelling and the Sweeney dwelling were to connect to public water, and there was a waterline easement that was granted. Don't ask me what happened when the house was built and why it wasn't connected, but that's what was...
Does anybody know if Sweeney's house is, or whoever it is, his house is connected? Does anybody know if that house is even connected? I mean, just...
I would suspect because there's no other wells that I know of.
You don't know who the divider was or the builder or anybody?
It was, Sweeney was the divider. I don't know who built the houses.
And Sweeney's not around anymore. I mean, somebody has an obligation. If this lady purchased that land, purchased the house...
Yeah, I just don't think it's the board's purview to do any of it.
I don't think it is either, but...
I think...
You have a problem, she has a problem.
Yeah. I think she needs, she needs to talk to her attorney and figure out what, you know, what she needs to do.
When I came to see you about it, how come you never said that to me?
Said what to you?
Exactly what you're saying now, because you were supposed to get back to me.
I was?
Yes, you were when I came to see you at the zoning board.
I...
You don't remember?
We had a conversation?
You don't remember.
I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay.
And just for the record too, I did, when we discovered the well issue, I did write to Ms. Clinton. Ms. Clinton did retain counsel. I've had conversations with counsel. As a matter of fact, I got a call today from the attorney who Ms. Clinton had been speaking to who says he now no longer represents Ms. Clinton. So, but, yeah, I think to some degree, this is not a board issue. It's an issue that needs to be addressed between ourselves and Ms. Clinton. And perhaps Ms. Clinton should be speaking to, whether it's the same counsel or somebody else, to protect her interests. But I did put her on notice and I have had communication with an attorney who had been representing her.
Okay, yeah, I mean, well, you've got some time to work it out.
Let her operate it. Should keep the well for now?
For the time being, yeah. Yeah, we have no intention of...
Of Phase Two?
Yeah, and hopefully, it'll be resolved before then.
She has some time to resolve.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You won't get cut off right away?
No, no.
See, that's what she's worried about.
No. And I had indicated that to her counsel also.
Which one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
As one.
No memory of speaking to her.
That's what I'm talking about, the septic system is working. The other guy's lot.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Dr. Pierce, and I live across the street from the fire department. First, I want to say thank you, they're great people to have as neighbors, that's first.
Can you just give me your street address?
Excuse me, ma'am, you need to be sworn in.
Okay.
And just give us your street address.
I live at 7 Hollywood Avenue.
Thank you.
Want to raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I affirm. Okay, I live directly across from the fire department, and they're great neighbors, as I said. I've never had any problems in the last seven years. However, I wasn't quite sure why I received the notice, and now that I've listened, I understand that there's going to be a new truck, and this truck will possibly have to use portions of my property to come in and out of, the frontage? Or am I misunderstanding that?
This truck is not nearly as big as some of the other vehicles that we don't have any problems with now. It's just bigger than the existing vehicle that it's replacing, and where it sits in the firehouse, it's just not going to fit anymore. But it's not nearly as big as the existing.
Okay, because currently, you know, the front portion, although, again, I think you guys are lovely and I've never, you know, complained, but you do use the front portion to, because you have to in order to do your job appropriately. You have to cut in front and go over, else you couldn't get in and out. So I'm just wondering about the future, and when the future, is it the future five years? Is it the future 10 years, 20 years?
No, the truck that you're, the new truck that's coming in is not as big as the existing truck.
It'll be smaller.
It'll be smaller, right? The trucks that we currently have that have a bit of a problem making that turn, I'm sure the chief can let the drivers know to be more cognizant to...
Okay. And they're coming when? The truck is coming when? Or has it arrived?
No, it's, uh, three weeks?
Three weeks, so it's coming soon?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering, that's all. Again, thank you.
Yeah, the new truck is not nearly as big as some of the trucks that are already existing.
Okay, thank you.
And ma'am, you were noticed because you're within 200 feet of the site. So by law, everybody within 200 feet had to be noticed. That's why you got the letter.
Right, I assumed as much, and I was like, when I'm listening to all this, I've been there seven years. There's a Phase One and a Two, and nobody ever called me? Quite interesting. All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one else coming forward, I would move that the public hearing on this application be closed.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Peter, if there's no final words on your part...
No, no final words. Most of the variances that are there are pre-existing. Any changes in the variances are de minimis, and obviously, this is an inherently beneficial use, and what we're providing on the property is necessary for the efficient operation of the fire company. And I would respectfully request that the site plan and variances be granted, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve this application with all the conditions that we mentioned.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. La Court?
Yes.
Ms. McGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mattler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Howt?
Yes.
Mr. Onyaka?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Our next and last application is Fusion on Ice LLC, PLN 14-00003. And by the looks of it, Peter, are you handling this one too? No, no, you're not.
I'm counsel.
Oh, okay.
Pete's just slower than he normally is, you know? He's...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Stephen Azalini. I'm an attorney in Florym Park, New Jersey, and tonight I'm representing...
Is that, is that mic working? It doesn't seem... Go it, see if you're getting a... You got to put it real close to your mouth.
Oh, I saw the other attorney holding it that close. I was wondering why. Now I know.
Yeah.
Okay, that's no problem. So for tonight, I'm going to be representing Fusion on Ice, the owner of the ice rink facility. I think, as you may know, it's called Protec Hockey Ponds, located at 15 World's Fair Drive, Block 468.09, Lot 62.02. This property is located in the M2 light manufacturing zone. So let me give you a brief synopsis of why we're here tonight. Our application tonight is for an amended preliminary and final site plan approval for the purposes of constructing an extension to the currently existing facility. The facility now includes one full-size NHL-sized rink and two smaller rinks. The proposal tonight will be to create another full-size rink and remove the two smaller rinks. My clients have been operating this facility for approximately seven years. Based upon this operation, what they've experienced is that to better serve the needs of the community, as they've discovered over the last seven years, they needed another full-size rink. This is going to enable them to have more programs, Learn to Skate programs, give opportunities to other programs, community groups such as the Girl Scouts, nonprofits, homeschoolers, things of that nature, to use the facility, along with some of the hockey teams that use the facility currently. We believe tonight, you're going to hear testimony, that the application will greatly benefit the surrounding community. One of the main purposes as well is to create a Learn to Skate program for figure skating. This, right now, they really can't have a reputable figure skating program because it requires another full-size rink for practice time. So they're having difficulties attracting those type of skaters. The hope is, one day, maybe they'll have an Olympian come out of the rink from Franklin. But tonight, we're going to have three witnesses. We're going to start off with our engineer, Larry Murphy, from Whistling Consulting. He'll go over the application, the site plan, the existing conditions and the proposed conditions, and review the variances. The rink's operator, Glenn Dennishevsky, is here. He will give testimony tonight about the operation of the rink and how the changes in the rink will be affected and how they'll operate after these changes are made. And we also have our parking expert, John Harder, who will give testimony tonight as well regarding the parking variance that we're seeking. The owners of the rink are also in attendance tonight, and if necessary, they can answer any questions. But mainly, the operations will be explained and testimony given by Mr. Dennishevsky. The applications, I'm sorry, the variances tonight, I'll have my engineer go through and go through Mr. Healy's report regarding the benefits and the detriment and the weighing of those two things. And I think you'll agree that the variances can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good or a substantial detriment to your zone plan or your ordinance. So with that being said, unless there are any questions from the board, I could start with my first witness.
All right.
Thank you.
I do. Lawrence Murphy? Thank you. Excellent.
Uh, Mr...
He's a relative.
Trustworthy name.
You know, there's a story about Murphys in Ireland. If you pick up Astolli, you throw him, you're going to hit Murphy.
That goes the same in my house, too.
Well, I don't know, my in-laws are Cronins, and they say the same thing, so... All right, so we'll start off. Mr. Murphy, can you give the board the benefit of your educational and employment background?
Sure. I graduated Rutgers University with a bachelor's degree in science.
All I need to know is, are you licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Then you're accepted.
Thank you.
Go.
Excellent.
All right, so why don't you start? And if you're going to mark any exhibits, we could start with A1 that are different than what's already submitted to the board. And if you'd mark it, Mr. Murphy, and date it today, and then just tell the board what A1 is?
A1 is an aerial exhibit illustrating the property, the surrounding property. Is entitled "Aerial," dated 7/15/2014. And it's from Google Maps, and you can see World's Fair Drive goes down the middle of the exhibit. Cedar Grove Lane is to the bottom right of the exhibit. And what this does is it gives a broad picture of what the hockey facility looks like. It's in the center of the map. It's the gray tone, that's the building. To the east, you have Praise Presbyterian Church, which was proved back in '06. You have a...
I think everybody's pretty oriented.
Okay, I'll move along.
I know you're licensed, and you had a degree in science so far. What is your license?
Civil engineering. Professional engineer.
Professional engineer.
Professional engineer.
Okay, I didn't see your name on the drawings, that's why.
Yeah.
I didn't know who... Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, let's just try to get to the substance, which is, you know, essentially, it's just outlining your proposal in like the next two minutes, and then, you know, you can get to the staff report.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I have to ask a question, but I didn't know what he was licensed as.
No, that's fine. Actually, I didn't, I didn't ask. I asked if he was licensed, but...
For the record, that does make it clearer. And for the record, Mr. Murphy is one of the partners, principals of Whistling Consulting.
Yeah, I was looking for his name on the sheet, Steve, that's why. Okay, sorry.
All right, so let's skip ahead to the actual proposal.
The proposed project intends to expand the building by approximately 9,700 square feet or about 70 feet to the north, on the north facade of the building, where the existing parking lot is. If you look at where the existing parking lot is, that building will occupy that existing parking lot. So that's the expansion, and the proposal does incorporate relocating this parking lot to the northern property line, so where that green space is located on the north side of the property. So really, you're stretching this building and stretching that parking and shifting it up. You can see where, we will be increasing the parking lot. We're going to be increasing the number of spaces from 136 to 157 spaces. We'll be relocating the existing Protec hockey sign closer to World's Fair Drive and also, at the same time, decreasing the size of it from 96 square feet to 64 square feet. We're not changing any access, as mentioned by the attorney. We're reducing the number of rinks from three to two. And from circulation standpoint, no circulation is changing. You're still going to have a double row of parking spaces along all three sides of the building. From a stormwater management system, the above-ground stormwater management basin will be placed underground. It will meet DEP requirements and Franklin Township requirements for water quality and stormwater management, and recharge is not required. Adequate lighting will be provided throughout the site, a minimum of a half-foot candle on the paved area. We'll also be providing some landscaping throughout the site. In regards to the sign, as I mentioned before, we're decreasing the size of the sign, but we're also moving it forward. And the reason we're moving it forward is to maintain the visibility for patrons that are coming from 287 down World's Fair Drive. If we were to meet the 20-foot setback, we would have to actually shift back 40 or more feet to be outside of easements that are on the property and encumbrances that we can't do anything about. That's why we're opting to shift it closer to World's Fair Drive. So for wayfinding, so people don't pass the entrance.
And just let me ask you about the sign. Is it, are there other signs on World's Fair Drive that are like yours within that type of setback?
Very similar.
Okay. It's not out of character?
It's not out of character. I counted probably 12 signs that are same distance, approximately the same size.
Because our planner made that very salient point in his report, and since you were on it, I figured it.
Yeah, and I think that's accurate. I think a lot of the signs, there's a lot of buildings that seem to be owned by the same company. They've kind of similar signage. All of them seem to be in a range of about five feet off of the property line.
Yeah, and they're smaller than what's allowed by the ordinance, which is in keeping with, the closer you are to the road, the smaller the sign can be because it's easier to see, and that's what we've kept in keeping with.
The question about the parking. I've spoken with the mother of one of the children that uses your facility now, and she says there's always a shortage of parking. She can never find parking. And if there's a shortage now and you're going to enlarge it and you're only adding a few more parking places, are you sure there's going to be enough?
I think, I think that question, we've taken a lot of time on that issue. And I think Mr. Dennishevsky, who's our operations person here and the parking expert, can answer that.
Okay.
And we really want to give you guys a good idea because a lot of changes have occurred. And we really want to give you guys a good idea because a lot of changes have occurred at the facility, and I think we could address that probably better than the engineer can at this point.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll get to that.
In regards to the rear yard setback, there is a variance for that. There, the ordinance requires 100-foot setback from a residential use or zone. The Praise Presbyterian Church is residentially, within a residential zone. There's a residential property to the south of Praise Presbyterian Church. It's a substantial distance. As you can see from the aerial, there's a substantial amount of trees between the residential use and the proposed building addition. The building addition will be partially screened by the existing building because it's on the north facade. So from my review and my perspective, that there will be, the addition will not be visible from the residence to the southeast, and there will be no negative impact on that residence. In regards to the variance for the parking in the front yard, I've all, if you drive down World's Fair Drive, it is consistent with World's Fair's drive. There's parking in the front yard along, I would say, 50% of the lots, and there is existing parking within the front yard in front of the Protec Hockey building. We're extending that along with the building. So we believe that is in keeping with the character of the area and will not have a negative impact on the appearance of the property.
You know, actually, I should just take this opportunity to point out to the board something I didn't understand initially, is that when you look at all these variances in Mark's report, he does a good job of explaining what was granted under the initial approval. Because, for example, you might say, oh, you know, the rear yard setback, you know, they're half as much as needed. But then if you read what his report, what they already received and where they're going, it's not that different. You know, so I just want to point that out to the board in terms of what was already granted.
Well, you know, on that exact thought, though, you know, actually, one of my points with regards to this exact variance is that, yeah, they're required to have 50 feet, and previously, they were granted a variance for this site for five to 12 feet, and now they're proposing two. And so, you know, while that might seem minor, five to 12 feet, you can put landscaping. Two feet, you can't.
Is that with regard to the sign?
No, this is in regard to the parking lot setback.
Oh, the parking lot setback.
Variance we're talking about. So my comment is basically, you know, can you make it a little bit bigger so it's something? You can't put landscaping in two feet. You can put landscaping within five to 12, and that's why the frontage, the existing frontage, is landscaped. Right now, on the proposed plan, the landscaping is proposed in the right-of-way, which we don't allow, so basically, there's going to be none. So can you do something? I'm certainly not asking you to comply with the 50, but can you do something to be consistent with the rest of the actual, of your site?
The challenge with complying or shifting it back further is that the building facade is a straight line, and as we move towards the north of the site, the World's Fair Drive actually curves in on the property, shrinking the amount of space we have to, you know, put parking, the drive aisle, and the building in. So we are held by the front line of the building. We don't want to deviate that because it will, you know, make the building look less attractive. And we don't want to reduce the drive aisle to less than 26 feet, and we don't want to reduce the parking spaces to less than what the ordinance requires. Because if we increase that, we would only need be, either need to be granted a variance for the drive aisle, the size of the parking space, or we would have to eliminate spaces to do that. As an alternative, we may be able to, it'll be tough to put shrubs in ivory within two feet, but you can put some, you know, some grasses in, some, you know, vertical grasses, which can grow in that, in that size, but you're not going to be able to put shrubs. So I think our only option is either to eliminate parking spaces or to put something decorative there, such as, you know, grasses or, you know, a landscape wall or something to screen it to basically achieve what you're looking for.
All right. Well, thank you for that explanation because you basically described a hardship situation in terms of the shape of the lot and the requirements in terms of the drive aisles and the parking space bits, et cetera. So perhaps if this goes to, if the board approves this, perhaps it would be conditioned upon the applicant working out some type of plan, fitting whatever they can within that space.
That's not a problem? Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
And then the last variance relates to the stream corridor. Based on my review, working with DRCC, DRCC has a stream corridor ordinance also, which requires a 300-foot setback. Based on my discussions with them, this does not qualify as a stream because it has a drainage area less than 50 acres. It also does not have a discernible channel within it. So from DRCC's perspective, there is no stream. It doesn't meet DEP's requirement for a stream. But, you know, your ordinance indicates if it's on the FEMA maps, it does. So based on the FEMA map, it designates it as a stream, even though DEP doesn't meet their criteria anymore. In my opinion, there is no impact to the stream corridor because the proposed improvements are going either within parking or within a maintained lawn area. So there is no value of that maintained lawn or the parking. And the majority of the improvements are going within the area that drains towards World's Fair Drive and not towards the stream.
Excuse me. You said it's not a stream according to DEP?
Correct. DEP has specific criteria relating to whether it's a regulated feature or not.
I know, but why, we're talking about setbacks for state open water. There are monuments running down here that call water boundary lines that are verified by DEP file, so forth, so forth. What is all that about?
So there is, it is defined as, back in '06, when the original application was done, it was defined as a state open water.
Has that changed?
If, it has. From the perspective of there is no, the drainage area has decreased. From back in '05, '04, when this development went in, Praise Presbyterian Church and other developments went in, they captured that runoff and the drainage area that was tributary to that area and redirected it. So it actually decreased the drainage area tributary to that stream to below the criteria for DEP. So it went from above 50 acres to below 50 acres.
Do we have any documentation from DEP supporting that?
We provided, not from DEP, but we provided that documentation to DRCC and their reviewers, and the reviewers who are within DRCC are actually employees and the reviewers at DEP.
Do you have a report from them?
We do have a report from them.
You've actually sat down and had, or meetings with Joe Righieri, the engineer for the DRCC, and everything, he's reviewed everything, and he's...
Correct. Yep.
Yeah, we've already been to the DRCC.
They've issued a report.
And the addition, the proposed addition, is not increasing the minimum buffer by, there's already an existing variance for that.
Correct. It's not increasing the required variance.
Mr. Murphy, did you also, I know we've worked pretty hard with the township professionals. We've had several meetings with them to review their memos. And can you just advise the board, have you had the opportunity to review the memos, and is there agreement with the points set forth in Mr. Zelenik's report, May 19, 2014, and his first report, March 31, 2014, as well?
Yeah, we have no objection to the content set of the report modified by various email discussions and verbal discussions.
I have no further questions for this witness.
So with regard to Mr. Zelenik's report, you have the version that says what's satisfied, not satisfied? And you can comply with anything that's not satisfied?
Yes.
Yes.
We had a meeting with the township professionals after his May 19, 2014 report and addressed the items that were indicated as not satisfied.
Okay.
And to my knowledge, they've all been satisfied at this point.
Or we can satisfy them.
Or we can satisfy them.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what we need to know. We'd like to just discuss exceptions, and then, yeah, you don't have any, that's great.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay.
Next witness.
Next witness. All right. I'd like to call the next witness is Glenn Danishevsky.
Good evening.
Raise your right hand.
You saw me swear for him to tell the truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Mr. Danishevsky, just give us a brief background about your experience and who you work for.
I'm Vice President of Operations for Rink Management Services. I've been in the ice skating industry for, it'll be 29 years this October. Our company operates 28 facilities across the country. We run 38 sheets of ice. We work with close to 70 youth hockey organizations, 23 figure skating clubs, and we put about 35,000 people in lessons and learn to play lessons every year. Our organization works with municipalities, Fortune 500 companies, non-for-profits, private individuals. We do design, we help with construction, and we implement startups, and we do transitions. Our company has a vast experience of operating ice skating facilities and recreation facilities across the country. We also work in ski areas, health clubs, pools, and things of that nature. In May of this year, May 1, we were selected by the ownership of Protec Ponds to operate the facility as a turnkey management. And what that means is we do everything from programming, scheduling, hiring, firing, HR, marketing, sales, accounting. Again, we're a turnkey facility management company.
You started in May this year.
Yes, May 1. And we were selected because there was, there was a change in leadership at the facility. Unfortunately, the manager had passed away, and ownership was running it until they found a company that could satisfy their needs and really relieve them of day-to-day operations. And that's what we do for our clients, again, all across the board, all different types of clients that we operate for.
And, Mr. Danishevsky, prior to tonight and your being hired, and since being hired, have you had opportunity to review with the ownership the historical operations of the facility, discuss with them the changes that are going to be made and how it'll affect operations?
Yes, that's one of the first things that we discussed because we knew that this expansion was part of their vision for moving forward. We, again, we operate a lot of different facilities, everything from standalone buildings such as Protec to mall-based rinks and twin sheets and single sheets, and so...
Sorry to interrupt, just to speed this along. What does this have to do with the applicant, or can you focus his testimony on the applicant?
Of course. Sometimes I like to hear the story, but I understand time is an issue.
I like to hear the story, too, but, you know...
I think I just wanted to set the groundwork that Mr. Danishevsky's experience as we get to the parking issue, because I think that's what's important, based on his experience and how he's going to change operations based upon how the facility was operating previously. So we'll just jump right...
And stack the crux of his testimony?
Yes.
Okay, then go right to it.
Okay. So I know parking has been brought up, and what I'd like the council to focus on is we are going from three rinks currently to two rinks. Even though square footage-wise, we have more space, the two rinks allow more flexibility for us as an operator for scheduling and programming, and that's really the key in alleviating any undue pressure on the parking area. Because when we schedule, we really think about the flow of our customers and how they come into the facility and into the building. So in scheduling, you know, we're very cognizant of, you know, making sure that we don't have both rinks emptying out at the same time. Currently, in the past, some of the experience that I've heard and registered is that you would have three rinks emptying out at the same time. Again, one of our strong suits is scheduling and programming of these types of different facilities. So in moving forward with this, there are some things that we're going to be implementing, such as buses will not be allowed onsite. They'll be able to drop off, and then they'll have to exit the facility and come back at a designated area, at a designated time when that program or event comes in. Also, with staggering the times, it allows us to notify the organizations and the groups when they do come to an event or a tournament that, you know, they need to come a half an hour before the event starts, not an hour or two hours ahead of time. Because this way, again, it allows the flow and allows us to control how the customers enter and exit the facility. So with, again, going down from three rinks to two, it gives us a lot more flexibility on scheduling and programming, and I think that's really the key that we've found in our experience as we operate these facilities, that, you know, pre-planning, communicating with our customers, and how we handle operations is paramount in getting people in and out of the facility quickly and safely.
And one other issue, I think, last winter is an example of weather issues that, if you notice in our parking report, created a lot less parking availability due to snow. What do you do in that, or what have you done in the past, what do you implement here?
In our experience, you know, we work with our vendors. We're crazy about the weather. That's all I watch, you know, come the fall and winter. And so we work with our vendors. If we know there's going to be a big storm, we arrange having the vendor on-call, ready a moment's notice, to move snow, lay salt or sand, and keep the parking area clear and usable 100%. You know, we also do snow watches, too.
Mr. Insleino, let me just interrupt you. Maybe to focus this a little bit more, I mean, what you're saying is great, and it all goes to mitigation, but it's nothing, nothing anybody, you know, any other parking situation would have. Let's try to focus, I think, on Mr. Healy's report on the parking.
Sure.
I think if we focus on those questions, we can get done a lot quicker. So in my estimation, the biggest, and Mark can add to this because obviously it's his report, but the biggest thing to me is the shared agreement. I mean, you're going to have 157 spaces. You're going from 136 to 157. You just testified as to what going from nearly three rinks essentially to two would do, and all those other mitigating things. Let's talk a little bit more about the shared parking and overflow and how we get from the overflow to the site and things like that.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to address that because...
Because that's really the crux.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify that a little bit.
Yeah.
I think we need, before we get to that, I think we need to talk about the numbers, you know, in terms of, you know, what, because right now, I mean, your own parking study said, on occasion, you have overflow issues. And we've heard frankly from, you know, people working, live in town, and know people who have been there, and even, you know, other than snow events on occasions, people are parking off-site already under the existing situation. And then, from what I recall in your own parking study, the need for off-site parking is going to go up. So I think we...
Well, that's what I wanted to address, because that parking study, and this all makes sense, I just didn't get to it fast enough. The parking study was done in March of 2014. Mr. Danishevsky came on in May of 2014. He addressed the operation issues and looked at that parking study as well. And the fact that there were three rinks and now going down to two, that study was not based upon the operations that he's going to implement. And that's why I wanted to get the testimony of his implementation of a different operating system. And the next question was going to be, do you feel that based upon what you're going to implement, are the 157 spots, spaces sufficient, the increase to 157? increase to 157, for the configuration that is going to be two rinks instead of three at this time? The shared parking agreement, when we sat down with the professionals, it really didn't meet the criteria of your zoning ordinance. And we realized that, based upon his opinion, based upon historical operations with the increase in parking, we don't need a shared parking agreement. It's there, I mean, but it's not necessary. The overflow parking really won't be an issue. It was more of an issue with the snow removal, because last winter, they were down to 99 spots out of 136 that were available. So, that's what I was getting to with Mr. Danishevsky's testimony, and to get it on the record based upon his experience. That's why I went to his experience, because he's got, he has more experience than the owners of the rink. Unfortunately, the previous operator has passed, and they were having difficulties with the operation. And I think that's what they were explaining to the parking expert when he did his report in March. So, things have changed since March.
Okay. And I'd just suggest as well that, you know, again, I think the board is going to need, you know, the code requirement aside, I mean, the code requirement, this is a pretty unique use.
Yes.
When you apply the code requirement to a unique use, sometimes it doesn't, you know, I think the board's going to want to hear practical numbers. You know, right now, you have a certain number of spaces under the proposed, you're going to have 157, you know, based on the historical operation of the site, based on one full-size and two small versus the proposed, where you're going to have two full-size. What does that mean in terms of parking need, including numbers? You know, how many people are going to be coming? How many teams? How many cars? Results from that? You know, how, you know, so is it going, you know, and then related to the 157, and then we can go from there.
Right. I mean, we can't provide historical on two rinks, because we don't have two rinks. It's based upon Mr. Danishevsky's experience.
All over the country, you've got two hockey rinks.
Yes.
If you had a youth tournament, you've got four teams playing, parents coming, then you've got a timeframe transition where people have to park while other people are coming in, other people waiting to go out. That's what kind of testimony you need to hear.
Yes. And that's what...
How does that work?
I'm not qualified to answer that.
And that's what we're looking for.
Yes. So, let Mr. Dan, I think if you ask your...
Take Mark's thunder away.
Well, here's just the thing, though. Is your other witness, the traffic engineer, is he going to provide testimony?
He's going to provide some testimony.
Maybe that's what we need. Here's more of the nuts and bolts, because, I mean, operationally, right, I understand what you would say, but, you know, we're not experts. So, we can, we take you at your word, and we can listen to another half hour, but it doesn't really help us anything. We need sort of like the professional parking traffic, if your traffic expert is going to talk about your parking, or your civil engineer is, I don't know. But one of those two, to maybe talk about, you know, the hard numbers and, you know...
I think you're right.
A comparable site, for example, or comparable, maybe operations can address this, because maybe you have other sites that can do that, if you take the testimony in that regard. But, I mean, you can tell us all you want about, you know, schedules and stuff, and it won't, you know what I mean? It won't mean that much to us, or at least to me. You know what I mean?
Well, right. Well, that's what I was trying to get to with Mr. Danishevsky. Based on his experience with operating two full-size rinks, we have three now. What's his opinion on parking need, and then have our expert?
Why don't we go to your experts? Because, I mean, we can take, basically, the summation is, it's a more efficient operation which will...
Yes.
Essentially decrease the demands on parking. We can't necessarily quantify that, but I think we can accept his testimony at face value.
Right. That was succinctly stated. That's exactly what I was trying to achieve.
Kind of what I figured.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, it's just...
All right. So, why don't we bring up...
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, sir. Do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth of nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name and your experience and professional relationship.
John Harder, Atlantic Traffic, I'm Principal at Atlantic Traffic and Design Engineers. Been a traffic engineer for the past 21 years. I'm licensed as a civil engineer, State of New Jersey.
I offer him as a parking expert in traffic.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, John, why don't you just take us through your report and, basically, give some of the numbers that you experienced on the current operations of the facility, and based upon Mr. Danishevsky's testimony with the two rinks now, how that would affect some of the numbers in your opinion, the hard numbers in the report?
I'll cut to the chase. Just a little background, we did work on the project when it entered inception back in 2006. We'd worked on a traffic study. Traffic impact really isn't the issue with this project, because the use is later, the demands are later in the evening, and on Saturdays, when the road volumes are not very, are not as high as commuter hours. We went out and we consulted with the owners in March and discussed how to evaluate the parking demands. And around that time, it was a perfect time, because they had two events that were their busiest events of the year for us to study. And a little more background is that typically, traffic engineers will rely on ITE. You hear trip generation numbers all the time, or parking generation. There's also information published by ITE for various land uses. There is only a single study that they have published for, what is, they refer to the land use as "ice skating rink." So, it's very limited, and indicates this site would just generate about 40 parked vehicles. So, it's not very helpful. So, it's appropriate for that reason to study our facility and how it operates today. So, in talking with the owners, the event on Tuesday, March, sorry, Tuesday, February 25th, was an evening event where there was a high school hockey tournament that was held. It was one event we studied from 4:00 to 7:00 in the evening. And then on March 8th, which is a Saturday, there was another event that was the peak of the year, referred to as the Shamrock Tournament, which is a out-of-state, teams come and play hockey games. So, those two events were what they determined would be the peak of the entire year. In terms of the operations, it was, as we all know, this is a rough winter. There was a lot of snow on the site. It was not completely removed. So, we did see some parking across the street as a result. There were light industrial buildings, facilities with plenty of parking, and they were not very used at the times of the two tournaments. What we then did is tallied the peak demands of both the evening and the Saturday, and found that the peak did occur as they projected during the Shamrock Tournament, when we reported a total of 147 parked vehicles, both on our site as well as off-site. And the 31, we found 31 parked off-site because of the snow conditions, as I described earlier. And we've agreed that going forward, as a condition, we'll remove the snow, and that 100% of the parking will be available. So, that will not be an issue going forward.
And also, John, in your report, you indicated that the buses were parked in a lot of the spots?
That's right. In the evening condition, there were buses that would park and stay in a row and take up multiple spaces, but we're also agreeing that that is a condition, that buses in the future would only drop off and pick up and not park on-site. So, that will also help. So, from our perspective, if you look at the simple numbers in terms of, we looked at the Shamrock Tournament, the peak demand, we observed the busiest event they hold during the year, 147 parked vehicles as a maximum. And they currently do not have quite enough parking to supply that 136. But in the proposed case with 157, they would have a reserved capacity of 10 spaces based on what we observed during this event. So, given that, what we studied, the larger parking supply, we're finding that there's enough parking. And now, as you've heard, the operations are different, and that will help to reduce that 147 somewhat going forward.
I guess, I guess, I need, I'm sure the board needs to understand, that's based on the tournament with one rink. Now, we're going to have...
One full-size rink.
Now, we're going to have two full-size rinks. How does it not mean that you need more parking and less? Because I know those tournaments weren't being held, from the best of my knowledge, on the smaller rinks. It was only, I don't know what you're using those for. So, I think the board needs to hear to understand how you go from one to two, that you can have the tournament, and you don't need more parking.
Yeah. We wanted to address, I think, when that Shamrock Tournament was going on, the two smaller rings were being used for smaller tournaments. And that's why I wanted to get into the operations.
They're not for hockey.
Well...
It's called three-on-three.
Yeah, well, we're talking about tournaments. Even the little kids play on the, you know, 85 by 200, that's the rink.
Yeah, but the mites with the ADM model from USA Hockey, they actually don't want them skating on the 200 by 85. So, again, where, you know, you have three rinks, and when it's scheduled, you would have two teams, well, four teams on the small rink and two on the large rink.
So, now you can't have any more mites playing?
Well, no, you can have mites, but you just won't be utilizing the whole sheet of ice. So, again, you're going to have less hockey players there because you have two rinks than when you had three rinks.
But when you have these tournaments, are you going to have playoffs where you have teams that have to stay on-site if they are going to be playing later during the playoffs?
We're not expanding tournaments, ma'am. We're, we need the larger surface as opposed to the smaller surface for the figure skating and more groups and things of that nature. We're not looking to expand tournament play. But what we are looking to do is expand the need for the figure skating and learn-to-ski programs and learn-to-play hockey programs, because you can't, you can't do competitive figure skating on these small rinks. So, are you saying that you won't be having, obviously, we only have the one full-size rink. If you have people like me playing hockey, you're only having one game at a time with the adults. So, when you have these tournaments, you're not going to have two games at a time? You're going to be only, operational, it seems to be what you're saying, because if you're going to have two games at a time on the two full-size, you're not going to do that? Or is, when you have two full games, you're going to have less amount of people than when you had one full and the two small? Or is it both? No, you're going to have less people, because you're not going to have three games playing. You're only going to have two games playing. And again, with staggering and controlling the scheduling, you have one team, you'll have one rink that exits while the other team is in full play. So, you're going to be able to control the flow of people in and out of the facility.
Will some of the parents stay?
Not normally. Experience tells us, when you're, if there is a tournament play, and again, we're not expanding tournaments, but in tournament play, you normally don't stick around. You exit the facility because, you know, you're going to get something to eat besides something in the snack bar. Mom and the rest of the family might want to do some shopping. Your next game might not be for four hours. So, you know, the majority of these people, they come in, they play their games, and then they leave.
Do people shower or anything after the game? Do they need them to go to the shower room, especially the adult players?
Adults do, but we don't do adult tournaments. The mites, mites and squirts don't shower.
I know that.
Snell told you that.
You know, the older kids that are starting to become adolescents, that they do shower.
That's another, see, everything here is, it's a transition. It's a delay thing. You've got teams playing, teams coming, teams going, parents coming, parents going.
And that's the importance of scheduling. And a hockey game is an hour and 15 minutes to an hour and a half. So, that's why it's critical how we schedule the rink and how we implement the games at the different facilities.
And you have this now with the three rinks, so...
Well, that's where I was going. So, the crux of the matter is essentially, you had 136 spaces before. You're adding 21, but yet you're adding a full-size rink. You had the two smaller rinks. It's not like those two smaller rinks weren't being used while the larger rink was in operation.
Exactly.
They may have been playing games with as many players, albeit maybe mites or somebody smaller, where you would have three games going on all at once, one on the larger rink and two on the smaller rinks. Now, you're basically saying, the most we can have going on at one time is two games, because I wouldn't think you're going to put another full-size rink, only not have games on it. But essentially, whether those players are big players or small players, they're going to probably come in the same number of cars, roughly speaking, right? And so, yeah, right?
Right.
Basically, what you're saying is, you're not going to have any additional impact.
Right. I mean, obviously, it's not what I'm saying, because I have no experience in hockey.
That's what I'm hearing the board's concern is, is the site's barely functioning, if not functioning now, with the level of parking it has. So, what we want to hear is some assurance that this change in configuration, aside from efficiencies and operations, will practically, you know, I think we're getting there. I think, I think we're now hearing the testimony that I was hoping to get to.
Right.
You know, to try to just assuage our fears that, you know, you can have a real bottleneck there.
Do you operate another site with two full-size hockey rinks?
Several of them.
I think, and how many parking spaces do those sites have available?
Some of them have a little less than the 157, and some have a slightly higher.
And how are those sites functioning as far as, have there been issues with parking?
That's, I never have a complaint on parking.
And are those sites run, going to, are they running about the same as far as the efficiency and the type of events that you have as this one?
Yes, especially. Some sites even more tournaments.
In your traffic report, did you have, you had a comparable, right, of another rink? Did you know? Or you didn't? Or, no, what I was seeing, I guess, is your sample based on 99 spaces that were available during the snowstorm, right, during the...
Correct. We, the study is just those two tournaments that we were able to look at, at the subject property.
So, there's really nothing in traffic manuals that gives you a comparable to a hockey rink?
Unfortunately, just the one study site that indicated there'd be about 40 parked vehicles on-site, which seems to be more of a figure skating-based facility that was studied, not a hockey facility.
So, that actually maybe is an operational question, and since everyone's sworn in, we can ask it. So, part of the advantage of having the two full-size rinks over the one larger and the two smaller is, like you said, the ability to do free skating, figure skating, open skating, where you have a lot of people and they're just skating around. Open skate, right? So, where does that, how does that compare to, like, if you were having a tournament? You can probably get more people on-site, right, than even in a tournament. I don't know. That's a good operational question. I mean, how many people can you fit on a rink if you just have, you know, Saturday afternoon or Sunday or whatever, open skate, come figure skate, fall down?
It does vary from different parts of the country. In this area, our experience is, if you have a public skate, you'd be anywhere from about 175 to 200 people. Again, one of the main focuses for this expanded rink is the flexibility so we can incorporate a figure skating program and also be able to do, continue with our hockey programs. Right now, with the configuration, figure skating's not able to do it, because they do need a whole sheet of ice.
Right.
Figure skating, a lot of the figure skating sessions and programs, we only put a maximum of about 25 people on the ice when they're practicing their jumps and spins for safety reasons. And so, again, the impact to the parking is actually less with the figure skating than such as in a tournament. But we, again, try to schedule and plan to make sure that we don't create ball necks in our facility.
Will you be having two rinks with tournaments at the same time at all?
We'll utilize the rink during a tournament, but we're not expanding, we're not turning Protec into having tournaments every weekend, because, again, that hurts the figure skating program. We're trying to establish our group business with Girl Scouts and nonprofits and things of that nature. But on the two tournaments that we currently have scheduled, yes, we would utilize it. But again, I would go back to my statement earlier that the key is planning and programming the games at the appropriate time. So, while one game's in full swing, the other one's exiting, so we don't have two games leaving at the same time. We won't be doing that.
Is that how you handle the other situations, the other rinks that you've just testified to, similar-type rinks?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So that I get, my assumption is that you would agree to a condition that you wouldn't have two games going on, starting at exactly the same time, then?
Yeah, I'd have no problem.
I'm just, because.
I think that's the testimony.
Yeah. It, it's not beneficial to the customers, and it's not beneficial to us, because then I actually need to put on additional people payroll-wise, because if you gotta cut the ice at the same time, I need two operators for the Olympia as, or Zamboni, if that's more familiar to people, as opposed to having it.
I thought I heard, though, that, I thought I heard before you said you were, you could have two games going at the same time, but you just don't have them leaving at the same time. You don't have both games ending at the same time.
Correct, they're not.
You stagger them.
Correct, correct.
They're not gonna both, they're not gonna both start at nine o'clock. One may start at nine, it may, one start at 9:45, because I think the idea is to have one at full swing, you know, not 10-minute offsets, so that the, I understand what you're doing, right? It's like in the middle of the game so that it's in full swing and they can all, everyone's in, so everyone else can exit.
It's very similar to movies.
Yeah.
Movie theaters, all the movies don't end at the same time. It's, it's like a half an hour in between, they start a half an hour. This way concession, parking, all that takes place.
Well, as a parent myself who traveled a lot with my children and sports activities like what you're describing, we would go and we would park and stay until that activity was over, because it was a distance from our house. We would go down to Philadelphia every Sunday morning. I wasn't gonna drop 'em off, come home, and then run back in an hour or two hours to come pick 'em up. So if you have parents that are coming from a distance for playoffs, they're gonna stay there. They're not gonna just drop their children off and leave.
I would agree with you. If there were, if there were additional amenities at the facility, such as a restaurant, a pub, an arcade, things for the family to do, our experience with a lot of our clientele is, they're always looking for things to do. Don't get me wrong, young hockey players love to watch hockey, but if you have your sister or little brother with you and mom.
And they come with their iPads.
Yeah, but again, it, our experience is that they don't really stay around if, if the next game is like four hours away, because there's only so much you could do. And although I think we, we make very good snack bar food, it's not very conducive to some of the people.
Well, I'm still concerned about a possible shortage of parking, and I'm wondering if, Mr. Murphy, if you've considered where you have the new parking lot labeled, since that is lower, putting in a double-decked parking lot?
That would be cost-repirative, that's, it'd be like $2 million.
We did not consider that, based on discussions with the operations and traffic engineer. We didn't feel that there was a need for that additional parking. Putting in a double, an elevated deck is an expensive proposition. You're looking at like $30,000 of space, and it creates a lot of grading issues. You end up losing spaces because you need to ramp up, and when you ramp down, you don't have access to spaces. So you really wouldn't get a substantial net increase in the number of spaces if you did a deck. That's, that's the problem with doing a deck. It's very expensive, and you end up losing spaces, some spaces to put it in.
But do you feel that you're still gonna have vehicles parking on other lots, adjacent lots?
Based on my discussions with the, the owners and the, the new operator, and the decreasing the number of rinks from three to two, plus adding the number of spaces and implementing the removal of the snow, and also my suggestion for not allowing buses to park there, I think a lot of spaces will be opened up that previously haven't been opened up historically, which I think you may have seen some, I guess, concerns or complaints from people that there haven't been spaces. But with the implementation of snow being, you know, hauled off-site, no buses parked on-site, and the offset of the turn, the start of games, I think you'll see a drastic improvement in the availability of parking on-site.
Where are the buses gonna park, if they're not permitted to park on-site?
Similar to other events where they do drop-offs, bus companies do tend to either go to a satellite area or a different part of the township and come back at the designated time. That wouldn't really be our concern. Would be notifying our clientele that, you know, buses would not be allowed to park on-site, and, and I know these bus companies find ways of locating places to stay until they have to come back and pick up their charters.
Okay, so maybe we can, I think we're getting to the point of trying to wrap this up, but per year, how many tournaments do you expect to have, hockey tournaments?
Currently, we have two. I wouldn't expect to have more than three, because again, tournaments affect our in-house programming, and that's really the focus of this expansion. And our operations is to build our Learn to Skate program and, and our figure skating program, and provide the ice needed for our Ducks hockey program. So again, our focus is in-house programming. We're not a tournament facility. There are a lot of other facilities throughout the country that have four or five sheets of ice, and actually, those are places where they do hold tournaments every week, and that's where a lot of hockey teams like to go.
Okay, so then, other than those two or three tournament, hockey tournaments a year, are there any other events, for example, figure skating or anything else, where the parking demand might be high, close to the 157?
No, I wouldn't see anything. The only thing I've experienced in, in my 29 years, or almost 29 years, is if you have a high school state championship game, those do bring out a lot of people.
But that would be very on occasion.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're basically, we're really talking about two or three events a year?
Correct.
Okay. And then for those two or three events a year, how many teams show up for a, for a hockey tournament?
It depends.
What's the maximum number?
Maximum number's 24 teams over the course of three to four days.
Okay, but how many at any one time?
Any one time, you'd have four.
Four at any one time, so that means the two, okay, so you're talking about the four teams playing on the two sheets of ice?
Correct.
Okay. And, and how many teams might play during the course of a, of a day, different teams?
Different teams?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's how many games.
Yeah.
Yeah, really, how many?
Whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Or all, well, he had mentioned 24. Are all 24 teams going to play at, at some point during that day?
During that weekend.
Some show up the first day, some show up the.
Yeah, exactly. During the weekend, you could have a maximum of 24.
In any given day?
No, no, no.
Over the course of, we may have.
The games are an hour and a half long.
Okay.
So if you start games at, say, eight in the morning, and you don't usually go past seven or eight o'clock, so you have a 20, 12-hour period, and you have an hour and a half, you know, you're looking at eight or 10 games.
10 games.
Yeah.
Okay, so four total playing, and then conceivably, there could be some teams, while those four teams are playing, I'm assuming there's some teams, some teams that are starting to show up for the next round of games, and then while those games are going on, or after those games are finished, you're saying most are gonna end up leaving, but they probably take some time to pack up. So I guess based on that, I mean, that's just realistically, you're not gonna have, and you just said, four teams are not gonna come and go all at the same time.
Correct.
You're gonna have, I'm gonna guess, maximum of maybe eight at any one, you know, maximum at any one time in terms of the teams that have just played, the teams that are coming, or maybe actually.
That would be the maximum, but actually, we'd like to, again, it comes down to scheduling, so we would only have six coming in, because again, we won't have two teams, I mean, two sheets of ice ending at the same time. So you would have the four teams out there, and then having another two teams come in.
Okay, so let's say, so I'm just trying to get to some numbers. And then how many, how many players on a team?
It averages between 12 to 16.
Okay, so 12 to 16, times.
Six.
Let's say, let's say six, let's even say eight. What is that? That's, that's less than, that's about 90, right, 96?
Yeah, 96, correct.
Okay. And you have 157 spaces.
Mm-hmm.
So about 100 cars, roughly?
Roughly.
Does that sound accurate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's correct.
That's kind of some of the numbers I was trying to get to.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
Does that sound, does the board have any questions about that?
I'm, I'm not sure what more we can, more we can get than you've gotten in terms.
I was trying to beat a dead horse on.
Yeah, I mean, no, and it's, it's a good thing to ask. It's just, it's hard because there isn't, it's not like a shopping center where you can pull out a traffic report and say, I got a Home Depot, I got this, I got this, here's, it's not that.
I guess, I guess the key is, is that your testimony is, is that based on your experience operating several other like rinks where there were two, and having pretty much the same type of programs, and somewhat the same parking, that there have not been parking issues. So you're saying that because of that experience, and because this fits into that model, and because of the changes you're making, you don't believe that there're gonna be issues at this site?
Correct.
I think those numbers are significant, though.
Yeah.
You have 12 players per team, and worst-case scenario, which eight teams in the building at any one time, that's about 100 cars. And you have 57 in case, in case some of the other teams are sticking around for some unknown reason, or they come by bus and they're stuck and they're on their iPads, you have about 57 spaces.
How many employees do you have parking at any, at the most?
At the most, during a large-scale event like that, eight to 10. And that is something that we could also work on with the staff to do some carpooling to alleviate spaces also.
You still do have, you said you might not need it, but you do have the overflow parking, right?
Yeah, and in particular, for any of the tournaments where you have out-of-state teams coming.
How many spaces is that, with Homewood, right?
Uh, Homewood, yes. They gave us a general letter that they're, they would like the business, they're actively pursuing the business, and they indicated in their letter that they have more than sufficient for their parking needs.
Well, they don't. That's, that's just not true. That's, yeah, they don't. They have, there's a whole thing where they.
Well, the parking is for their customers.
Yeah, they, they actually have shared, they have some shared parking with everything, so that's, I would be, I would be loathe to use that site as something that you're gonna rely on.
No, we're, yeah, we talked about, we're not gonna rely on that.
I, I would say, because they don't have enough parking, we gave an approval, they got some relief, and they have some shared, they have some shared parking and every, it's a little complicated there, but, and it's, there's no sidewalks going from there to your site, so we wanna be very careful about, you know, talking about relying on any.
Right, and we're, and we're not proposing that. What, what Homewood does is they, they would like the patrons of, to use their facility, and they do indicate that they would provide shuttle service.
Right, that, and that, that's, that's something.
But it's not for other guests not staying at the hotel, to park there.
Right.
That's not, that's not what we're proposing.
All right, just one quick question. You said you comply with everything in Tom Zelenek's report. Did you, did you mention the fire report? Can you comply with that at all?
I didn't see the fire report.
Uh, it's dated April 24th from John House. Well, okay. It says, "The fire department connection, FDC, cannot be obstructed. The proposed plan has a parking stall in front of the FDC," so you wanna remove that, or at least relocate it.
Yes.
Hopefully, that doesn't reduce it by one parking space, because I don't wanna spend a half hour talking about that. "The subsurface detention system must be capable of supporting the ladder truck outriggers, 100 PSI H20 loading. Township engineer must approve design."
We're agreeable with that.
"And the standard boilerplate, we reserve the right to make additional comments based on the submission of revised plans or testimony presented to the board."
That's fine.
Which, yeah, means that. And I think that was the only other report, because everything else looks fine. Any other questions from the board? With that, can we open to the public?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the meeting be open to the public for a hearing on this proposal.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody looking to speak?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one coming forward on this application, I would move that the public hearing be closed.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any summation from you?
Not really, I just like, I know you like to be brief, so I think just to emphasize what the operations testimony was, that the, the main purpose is really to expand the Learn to Skate program, to get some figure skating availability at the rink. That's the main focus.
And your variances would be pretty much considered under what criteria?
Under C2 variances, I think the benefits substantially outweigh any detriment, plus that most of them are continuing non-conformities, existing variances, and I think the engineer testified that there's no detriment to the surrounding area or to the residences in the area.
Very well. Can I, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as applied.
Second.
Councilman Chase.
You're really stuffing a little too much onto a lot that's not quite big enough, but on the whole, yes.
Mr. LaCorte?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
I love the game, but I'm voting no.
Mr. Howe?
No.
Mr. Onyaka?
Yes.
Chairman Ossini?
Yes.
Thank you for your time tonight and for the approval.
Okay, best of luck. I, I know it's a very popular site, I, I think that, you know, it'll continue to be.
And I have to admit, I have become a hockey fan since my daughter was dating one of the hockey players in high school. I didn't know anything about hockey before that.
Don't be a hockey fan if you like him.
No, I do like him.
Okay.
It's, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we say goodbye, the meeting, the meeting in August will be canceled, so there will not be any meeting in August.
Okay, so with that, make a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's closed.